Elise, are we ready?
All right.
I'm ready. Can you see the agenda up on the screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Everybody's set here. Peggy's here. All right. Okay, so it is five o'clock on Monday, July 13th, this is the village board meeting, and so I'm calling to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Sure. Horton.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Glish. I'm sorry, Glish.
Yep, you're here. Yes.
Bollig.
Bollig here.
Thank you. And Jacobson.
Here.
All right. Yeah, thank you. All right. So I don't know if we have anyone on the call tonight for the the public appearance with the Janesville Street and South Prairie Parkway, but if you're here for that, we will be talking about that on item four. So but first, we do community input. Is there anyone on the call that would like to address the board on any issues that aren't on the agenda? Let me give it a minute in this time of unmuting and muting. All right, I'm not hearing anything. So, okay, so then we will go on to public appearances. This is a discussion with senior traffic engineer Lee Gibbs from SRF Consulting Group regarding the intersection control evaluation study for Janesville Street and South Prairie Parkway. We have a recommended motion to include the project in the capital improvement plan coming up. And again, if you're here to speak on the subject, we'd be happy to hear from you. And then first, we're probably going to get this over to maybe Jeff or Mike to introduce it, and then we'll hear from that sound okay? Mike or Jeff?
Yeah, that sounds great. So obviously.
Okay, you should do it, please. Yeah.
Sure. Yeah. And as everyone knows, you know, back when I want to say it was probably a year ago now, there were some concerns over public safety, crossing guard safety, school kids crossing at the Janesville Prairie Parkway intersection, which obviously has seen a traffic change with the addition with the completion of the Perry Parkway connection several years ago. And so following that, we agreed to put money towards hiring a basically an intersection evaluation and warrant analysis for this intersection. And since retained SRF consulting, Lee Gibbs, and he's he'll be here to present tonight and give a kind of a recap of his report of that and his recommendations. And SRF was selected, I mean, obviously very qualified, but then also they'd been doing the traffic studies for the analysis and design for traffic signals at the Park Street Janesville intersection, which is being constructed right now. So, you know, what we did task Lee and his company with is to evaluate the intersection, the geometry, the traffic counts, and then provide us both some short term, possible short term improvements that might be easy to implement on a very fast basis with a low budget cost to the, you know, long term, what might be the the expensive option, which would probably be signalized, signalized or roundabout. And then in addition to look at the warrant analysis, whether it's warranted, and whether or not it's something that this, we have to remember, remind everyone that Janesville is still a county highway, not it not part of our jurisdiction, and whether the county would participate financially in any of this. So Lee's done a really nice job. Hopefully, you've had a chance to review the report. If not, he'll kind of go through and recap some of the highlights from that tonight. And we've also had it out on our website for residents to read and everything, but done a nice job. We actually had this scheduled, I believe, for March. Isn't that right, Lee?
Yeah, it's no doubt about that.
And once you know, yeah, we never envisioned, obviously, being delayed this long, but it's time to start getting back to some normal and try to, you know, keep some of this moving. So I'm going to turn over to Lee unless there's any questions of me first. Great. Lee, is yours? Do you need to share screen or?
That would be great, Jeff. Yes.
Okay. See if you have permission. I know Elise is at mission control. Okay, and you're the host now.
Um, yes, I do. We're going to show this one. And first of all, good afternoon, everyone. Again, my name is Lee Gibbs. I'm a senior traffic engineer with SRF. And as Jeff mentioned, I have been asked to take a look at the Perry Parkway and Janesville Street intersection. I think for just the continuity of my presentation, if we could just save all questions and what have you, at the end of my presentation, I I will be brief but detailed. So without further ado, what you're seeing is a Google Earth image of the village and just kind of giving a high level background of it. Perry Parkway, obviously, a collector roadway that connects the Oregon High School campus and the ice arena to the south and connects to Janesville Street on the south end of Perry Parkway. It connects to, you know, a number of residential neighborhoods that are located here in the village. And as I'm sure everyone's aware, Janesville Street connects the downtown and westerly areas of the village to the US 14 Highway 138 interchange area. And as Jeff has mentioned, with the with the in with the connectivity of Perry Parkway, there is a lot more vehicle interaction going on here, particularly coming from the south and using Janesville to get to Highway 14 and 138 in the morning, vice versa in the evening, and also with more bikes and pedestrians winding to cross, connecting from the south to the north to go to the campuses for for school and then coming back home afterwards. So as Jeff mentioned, SRF conducted intersection control evaluation study of this intersection. And the first thing we did is went out to the intersection, did a field review, took measurements, you know, kind of, you know, do an investigation. Are there things going on here that would be troublesome for a driver or for a bike or pedestrian? Are there things that could be done to improve it right off the bat? Just get a kind of a lay of the land, if you will, of this intersection. So one aspect we also did is we conducted traffic counts at this intersection. We conducted traffic counts. This was December of 2019. So all pre-COVID conditions, it was not cold or snowing that day. So pedestrians were using the intersection as they as they deemed fit. And so what you see here, though, the non-bracketed numbers are the turning movement volumes in the AM peak hour, the bracketed ones are in the PM peak hour. And I show this intersection just that how much traffic, I mean, we're talking over 300 rights that are doing this movement from Perry onto Janesville. I mean, you can even see kind of the the wheel tracks here on the Google Earth image here showing just how predominant that movement is. And on the on the flip side, you know, coming in the PMP, typically PMP, think of coming home from work. There's a pretty predominant movement coming back this way. So the south leg of Perry Parkway is is pretty heavily used, heavily being a relative term, but it is pretty heavily used by a lot of the residents that live on the south and the west sides of Perry that use the the 14-138 interchange, come up Janesville Street, and then use Perry Parkway. And so we did collect traffic data. We also looked at crash data at this intersection. What we did is we looked at the past five years. So we looked at years 2015 through 2019 at this intersection. And the bulleted points here show some of the the crash trends or the crash facts, if you will, of the intersection. The key one that I found very interesting are the last three bullets that the majority, eight of 14 crashes, or 14 crashes in five years here, eight of them involved the driver between the ages of 16 and 18. Think high school traffic, high school motorists. Half the crashes occurred between 3:00 and 6:00 PM. Of the seven angle crashes, and angle crashes are kind of the the worst crashes in terms of potential for severity, like having injury or potentially fatal crashes. The majority of these crashes involved a driver between the ages of 16 and 18. And so I think we all kind of recognize that motorists of that age are a bit inexperienced. They're they're getting their their feet wet, so to speak, on the on driving. And it just kind of kind of raised a red flag that perhaps there's something at this intersection that we should do to help help these motorists along, that what's going on out there may not necessarily be substandard or troublesome for an experienced motorist. But because we have a lot of inexperienced motorists and inexperienced by terms of age and years of driving, using Perry Parkway and using this intersection, there may need to be a call to make this a little bit more, a little bit more inviting for those motorists to understand and make sure that they are paying attention and can see clearly and are alerted to other things that are going on in the intersection. So that was a pretty significant crash statistic that I found when reviewing the the crash data. So with the crash data and with the count data in hand, we I started to do analysis of this intersection, and particularly traffic operations analysis. And so I took the volumes that you saw in the the previous illustration and and put them through analysis using national and state regarded methods to do so. And what you see below here are the results of existing conditions. If, you know, all things being equal, what's going on at the intersection right now, quote unquote, right now being December of 2019. And the key statistic to look at is this LOS, or level of service. What that is, is that it's a statistic regarding the comfort level that a motorist has driving through the intersection. The the letters that are associated with it, think of school. As, Bs, Cs are good. Ds, okay, ease enoughs. We want to try to avoid or make better. So currently, the northbound, southbound is Perry Parkway, eastbound, westbound is Janesville Street. So what this is showing is that there's quite a bit of delay on Perry Parkway, meaning vehicles are waiting a pretty solid amount of time. And we're talking around, you know, this is over a minute southbound. So coming from, think of coming from the school complex going south. So waiting, you know, near minute and a half, minute 40, on average, the average vehicle would be waiting that amount of time. And that's because it's single lanes, you know, there's no exclusive turn lanes on there, waiting for a stop. You have to look both ways, you know, think of if you are through or a left turning vehicle, you have to wait, you know, make sure traffic in both directions is free and clear before you can continue on. And Janesville Street does get a decent amount of traffic during these peak hours, as you have a lot of residents from the village going out to the freeway interchange or coming into the village. So these vehicles on Perry Parkway will wait a little bit. And the delays are, they're okay, you know, for northbound, kind of that that heavier movement. The queues are are okay, 180 feet, and we're talking about seven to eight vehicles. It does seem like a lot. One thing that can happen is if there's driveways or roads nearby, you can impede on that. So that that can be an issue. So this is kind of our baseline. This is all alternatives, all scenarios will be compared based on this this table, this information. So the first alternative that I looked at was, well, if we recall, a lot of vehicles are doing this right turn from Perry onto Janesville. And the roadway is wide enough to take on three lanes, meaning there'd be one lane going south and potentially like a through and a left turn lane here, and the exclusive right turn here. We'd have to get rid of the parking here and here to accommodate that, just to make sure that vehicles would have enough roadway width to to make their movement safely and smoothly. But that was an alternative I looked at. So what if we make a, what if we put a northbound right turn lane on there? And this is the results of it. Not, you know, this changes, it goes, it goes from, I think it was an E up here, or excuse me, a D to a D and a B. It helps out the right turns significantly, because now, if you think about it, if you are a right turning vehicle, you may not have to wait behind a vehicle turning left or a vehicle going through. You have your own dedicated lane that you can just turn right. And right turning vehicles, they're only looking in one direction, really, before they can just continue on. They don't have to worry about the cross traffic going on. So right turners are really helped out by this. But the throes and the lefts that that want to cross the intersection, it doesn't help them one bit. As you can see, they they are still waiting a pretty solid amount of time. And the queues that you saw went away because the right turning vehicles now have the ability to just turn right and are not stuck back in a queue waiting for potentially a vehicle to go through. So this is, this is a, an alternative that I looked at. Like I said, it does help the right turning vehicles, but it really doesn't kind of tackle the situation for left turners or through movements, which I'm guessing this is what a lot of the village staff members and probably members of the the board and the public are kind of worried about trying to to cross Janesville Streets to continue on Perry Parkway. So we started to look beyond that and looked at several options. One was to make this intersection always stop, stops in all directions. Everyone's forced to stop. So that way, it'll, it for sure allows a vehicles on Perry to 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 come into the intersection, but it stops traffic on Perry, or excuse me, on Janesville Street. Another option would be to look at a traffic signal, signalize the intersection. I'm well familiar with that. The other thought is a roundabout. Now, I, as Jeff mentioned, I talked about a roundabout at Janesville Park, and I saw the eye rolls and the internal gnashing of teeth about it. I get how polarizing roundabouts can be, but when we're doing intersection control evaluations, we want to make sure we turn over every rock, so to speak. We want to make sure we do a thorough evaluation. So that's why we are looking at a roundabout. Maybe a roundabout's the best choice, maybe it's the worst choice, but we won't know unless we evaluate it. So we did look at a single lane roundabout here as well. I'm not, I'm going to kind of gloss over the analysis a little bit, just that it's, you know, a lot to take in right now. By no means am I hiding anything. Just want to give the the summary of this. When we looked at an always stop situation, that's this line here and this line here, it it does not work well. As I mentioned, Janesville Street would have to stop. There'd be a lot of cars backed up. It just would not work out. It'd work out pretty good for Perry Parkway, but it wouldn't work out for Janesville Street. So the always stop was was quickly set aside. The traffic signal in the roundabout all work pretty, pretty good. The the operations are adequate, acceptable, you know, those As, Bs, and Cs, the the queues for the signals start to get a little bit long. And, you know, you're talking 300, 350 feet. That is starting to get in the pretty long range of operations, but it doesn't, the queues don't back up into like another intersection upstream. So while it is long, while it is storing a lot of vehicles, when the signal is red, it can clear them out adequately. So again, from a traffic operation standpoint, a signal and a roundabout both work well. Again, from operations, there's much more that has to be involved with before a recommendation would be made to implement one of them. But from operations wise, they both work good. So as Jeff mentioned, to put in a signal warrant, or excuse me, to put in a traffic signal here, Janesville Street is under the jurisdiction of Dane County. And Dane County requires communities or intersections that they have, they need to meet signal warrants to, for the for the county to start thinking about putting in a signal. And signal warrants are, they're put out by a publication called the Manual of Traffic, Uniform Traffic Control Devices, or the MUTCD. It's a, it's a national publication that helps guide municipalities on when to put in stop signs, warning signs, and traffic signals. And in this, in these analysis, they have warrants that should be met for a signal to be implemented. And Dane County looks at minimum volume warrants. So they want to make sure that there's enough traffic going through the intersection to implement a traffic signal. So like lower volume intersections, those kind of get weeded out, or hey, we'll look at those in the future when volumes meet. So we looked at the existing counts that we did in December 2019 and applied the MUTCD warrants to them. And as you can see, the the signal warrants, let's see, the the signal warrants are met for four hour and for the the peak hour warrants. So showing that there's a pretty decent amount of traffic going through here during during the peak hours that it can meet a four hour warrant and in a peak hour warrant, which is good. Typically, in in my experiences with Dane County, they want the eight hour volume warrants met, and which this intersection does not achieve. That doesn't mean that an intersection cannot be signalized. It's most likely that Dane County won't provide any monies toward it. So the village, in this case, would have to to come up with money to to design and build the traffic signal. So what I say in the report is that, yes, it doesn't meet the the warrants, but nonetheless, Dane County should be consulted to get their understanding of the the situation. Perhaps, you know, I I can't speak for them on this, but just to get an understanding and an opinion from Dane County as to what their thoughts are for this signal to to be implemented. So if a tra, so let's say like a traffic signal is kind of a a dream scenario, if you will, because as I said, from an operations standpoint, a traffic signal would would clean up a lot of the the delays and queues out there. Heads and bikes, they would be given head signals that they could cross, have their own time given to them. So it would kind of clean up the the pet and bike issues or concerns out there. So let's say like the the traffic signal is kind of like a long term dream scenario, if you will. So are there any short term things that can be done between now and when that signal would be built to to help everyone out at that intersection? And so there there are three things that the report discusses. One would be improve intersection visibility. So bear with me for a second here, if I can find my little Google man. We're going to come down to the intersection. And you'll see, looking at the stop sign here, you know, this is Perry Parkway looking west. You have the stop sign, you have the R, the pedestrian RV pole, you have the utility pole, tree, tree, potentially more vegetation down there. There's an awful lot to be looking at that could that could impair your vision when you're stopped here looking to the to the west. And one thought would be to kind of clean this up if if you can, you know, is there a way that, you know, the utility poles could be moved? Not saying that that's not neither easy nor feasible, but things like that, you know, the vegetation, can those be trimmed a little bit? If there's any larger bushes or things like that that can be trimmed. I'm not saying that, you know, this report is not saying we're going to tear these trees down. But it's things like that that can help the visibility of the intersection. And, you know, as I said, the crash facts said that drivers 16 to 18 are causing a good portion of these crashes. So if we can clean up, so to speak, the intersection, make, give, provide more, a better vision, both looking west and looking east, for for motorists, all the better. So that that was one item that was talked about. The other, another one would be to help out the bikes and pets in the area. As you can see, you know, as we saw, there is RRFB or Rapid Rectangular Flash and Beacons installed on this approach. There's, you know, crosswalks, and, you know, especially the the black crosswalk styles, which is great, provides more of a visual cue to a motorist. Things that could be done, you know, make sure that these are brightly painted, you know, white is is A, okay. Just make sure, you know, Wisconsin winters, snowplows can can grind off the epoxy, dull them down, make sure that they're just fresh, very visible to motorists. Things I've seen is putting in painted words, you know, like ped crossing or school crossing. I know, I think this is a pedestrian, not a school crossing. So this would be, you know, you have ped crossing words here, kind of another visual cue, advanced warning signs. So motorists are aware that there's an important intersection coming up that has known pets and bikes at it. So, you know, there's things like that that could be done as a short term thing. One other unique consideration would be to, is actually something further upstream. And so we're going to look at Janesville and Wolf here. So as you can see, going west at at Janesville, at the Wolf Street intersection, there's a shared through left and a through lane. So essentially, two vehicles side by side can go through this intersection. However, there's no indication by sign or marking or what have you that says this, one of these lanes end, please merge. So I guess technically, you could have two lanes side by side, or two vehicles side by side, coming up through Perry. Now, I think that's a pretty tight fit at Perry, but technically, the, you know, there's no real indication of for a motorist, hey, this lane ends, please move over. So one thing that would help some driver expectancy along this stretch would be to actually change the configuration here from shared through left to just exclusive left. So from Park Street or from Highway 14 coming west, you would have an exclusive left turn lane here, and just one through lane here. So that way, vehicles continuing straight do not have to worry about emerging vehicle. It's a, it's a single lane of traffic. None of that, is it your, do you merge? Do I merge? Who merges? I don't know. Then all of a sudden, you bumped each other. So we did look at operations analysis of changing this out. It does work. Delays are adequate. You know, remember that level service, ABC type of thing, those are the the operations. One consideration, though, is that by making this a left turn only lane, you have a situation called a trapping left. What that means is, say, you're coming off the freeway and you're on, you're in this inside lane, you come, you come through Park Street, and oh, no, this is a left turn only lane. I need to move over. And so in essence, the pavement markings or the configuration here trapped vehicles here that don't want to turn left. They have to merge over. And we're talking, I think this is roughly 400 to 500 feet. It is not a large distance for these vehicles to move over. So if this were to be a left turn only lane here, there should be some signage, some other things that the village can do at Park Street, beyond Park Street, after Park Street, just saying, you need to move over if you want to continue left, or excuse me, if you want to continue straight on Janesville Street. Trapping lefts exist. There's also trapping rights as well for right turn lanes that just magically appear. They're not inherently like crazy bad things, but they are things that can cause some driver expectancy. And there's a number of measures. And there's a number of measures, like I said, through signing, through pavement markings uh that can be done to alert motorists. This lane does not come through. It does eventually become a left turn lane. You need to move over. Um, the other uh item I want to bring up is involving pedestrian safety. And this is my my last point uh of this presentation is that uh to help out bikes and pets. Um, I think Janesville Street has uh about a forty to forty-four foot uh um pavement space, uh pavement out with for pedestrians to walk and and during school, uh, you know, school um start and end is put bikes and pads are are crossing. They might feel a little little intimidated by it, especially as traffic is picking up uh because of commuter times and things like that. So is there ways that we can help bikes and pets out? And one item that I'll zoom in for everyone here, one thing that could be considered is uh temporary curb extensions or temporary bump outs. So the bump, traditional bump outs show this is all curb raised. You know, there's there's a terrace or a sidewalk here. So vehicles physically can't, well, unless they jump the curb, should not be on that uh that bump out. What we're seeing here is temporary. So what you see in these two photos, this is paint. This is painted pavement here. And then these are flexible tubular delineators kind of uh, you know, marking, if you will, where this temporary curb extension is. Uh, the benefits of it is you're providing a curb extension without without really, you know, having the the need to put in uh new curb for this. So i- it still gets the the motorist's attention. They see the, they see the delineators shrinking the road down. Your eyes are are gonna be fixed to that and oh, the roadway is starting to shrink. I may want to uh slow down because I'm not comfortable going through a a narrower roadway area. And the the delineators do provide a a bit of a ref- a refuge area for for uh bikes and pets to give them less distance to cross in the traveled way. So stay instead of, you know, forty or forty-four feet, now they may only have to cross, you know, twenty-four, twenty-eight feet. So less time actually in the traveled way, potentially interacting with vehicles. Um, one benefit, one or I should say, one uh downside of this is yes, the the delineators can be knocked down. They're they're not a permanent thing. So if a car were to go out of control, those delineators will not stop a a a car that loses control. But one remedy of this is say in the wintertime, when bikes and pets uses are traditionally uh down in Wisconsin, just because of winter and snow, the community can pop up these delineators and it's kind of back to a traditional intersection. When the weather gets good, when people are still out and about again, and that time can be determined whenever, then the delineators go back up and you kind of, you have that temporary curb extension. So it's it's a a pretty neat uh kind of time of year uh function that would help bikes and pets uh cross the intersection. Now, um, my last thought is that many of these uh improvements are uh if the intersection stays, it's a two-way stop. Uh, these are uh if this were to become a signal or become a roundabout, uh then a lot of these functions go away because as I mentioned, with a traffic signal, there'll be ped timers, ped signal uh indicators. So bikes and pets will have their own dedicated time to 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 cross Janesville Street or to cross Perry Parkway. So um, but as I said, given the the timeframe that it may be for a signal to come in, these are all very good options, uh a short term options that are are not very expensive either. Um, you know, like take the probably the most significant one, these curb extensions. You're talking about probably painting, you know, a lighter gray and then adding uh tubular extensions, not very uh expensive in the grand scheme of things uh to to implement. Uh, with that, uh, I want to conclude my presentation and will uh gladly take any questions at this time. I thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Lee. All right. So we have a question from Cory.
Yeah, so thanks, Lee. Um, I guess one thing that um I wanted to point out is our primary reason for looking at this intersection was pedestrian safety and some of the close calls that are crosswalk assistance and pedestrians have had at the intersection. And there's two things that I think weren't really discussed that I think are potential options to figure that out. One of them being um uh left turn and through movement restrictions at various hours. Um, we saw in the data that many of the accidents are related to younger drivers, presumably probably coming to and from high school. If we restricted those through left turn movements, I think it's probably fairly likely that a majority of those accidents are are people making those movements versus right movements. And I think we also have a new option with the completion of the signal at Park Street to where high school students can take Park Street, go to a signalized in their intersection already. Um, so I think that's an option that's relatively very, very low cost and could significantly help the safety of the intersection when those pedestrians are going to be located there as well. So I think that's a a a very prime example of something that I think that may be helpful. Um, one other thing that I saw wasn't discussed is just the layout of where pedestrians enter the intersection. All of the curb ramps are essentially at the point of curvature of the uh intersection. If you zoom into it, you'll see the pedestrians basically get dumped out right at the corners. And I think that that's problematic because drivers at that point are already starting to look to make their turning movement and they lose sight of where the pedestrians are located. So I think if we change this intersection to have eight curb ramps versus four, it would enable us to push those crosswalks back. So pedestrians would be much more visible from vehicles before they're already making their turning movements.
Uh Cory, thank you for for your questions. Those are very, very good questions. Uh, the first uh point about turn restrictions. So uh time of day turn restrictions do exist. They have been implemented. The key factor of turn restrictions uh for time of day is that we all hope that everyone does adhere to them. Um, without physically putting the uh the the physical islands directing motorists to turn right, it's all on you know, the honor system, if you will, that vehicles from Perry won't turn left. So you could put it, you could put in the the uh no left turn lane or excuse me, no left turn sign or no through sign, right turn only from this time to this time. But there may need to be an increased police presence there to make sure that folks are not turning left or through or, oh man, I went down Perry during this time and I forgot it was right turn only. So um, just, you know, I'll just sneak out and you know, you have to make sure that people are adhering to the the time of day restriction. Not that I'm not discouraging it in one way, any way, shape or form, but there is kind of an an added level of enforcement that would be needed to make sure that vehicles are not gonna uh turn left or or go through during those times of day. Um, you know, as for you, the the sidewalk, that's, you know, that's a a really interesting thought. And I do see that those uh sidewalks come in at the uh along the 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 radii of each of the curbs. Um, I don't have any any issues with uh putting the the sidewalk, stretching them out. Um, the an issue at hand though would be, so you have the the rapid uh rectangular flashing beacons. Um, those may need to be moved. I don't think they have to be moved, but that's something just to consider. Uh, given the word, the location where they want to kind of alert motorists, uh, you know, approaching it or just to have the the so the signs just beyond the crosswalk. Um, there would be some added um, some added uh uh expenditure to move crosswalk uh pavement. But one thing also is that if you move particularly on Perry Parkway, if you move the crosswalks back that are just fronting Perry Parkway, you would have to move the stop sign back. You have to, you know, obviously a car has to give, I think it's something like three feet, three to four feet in front of the cross, the crosswalk as a safe buffer between car and pedestrian. By moving the stop signs back, now you could potentially be creating a a harder sight triangle for motorists. And you, what you may wind up having is a situation for is that a motorist is driving on Perry Parkway, approaching Janesville. There's a stop bar at the stop bar or at the stop sign. So they get to the stop bar, they look left, look right. I can't see anything. So I'm gonna creep and creep and creep to a situation where I then can see. Um, anecdotally, I'm I'm uh working for the Village McFarland on something similar to this where the stop, because the the layout of the intersection, the sidewalks and crosswalks, the stop sign is really far back from the physical intersection. So motorists are creeping up and up and up to make sure, okay, can I get safely into the intersection? And one of the recommendations, probably similarly here, is that you can do that. But you need to make sure that there's enough vision, uh good vision, you know, no obstructions or things like that, looking left and looking right. So, you know, again, Cory, those are great questions that you have. Um, tho- those considerations are are all very good ideas to consider. There is just a, there is another level of consideration that you have to do, but um, I don't see those necessarily, you know, being out of the realm of uh implementing either.
All right. Thank you. Uh, other board comments and then we'll take some public comments. Any board questions at this time?
Jerry Baller has questions.
Yeah, go ahead, Jerry.
Yes, um, I said a question. We have not budgeted for this. Is that right, Steph?
Correct. Well, we're, we are looking at direction from you whether we would include this as part of our upcoming capital improvement plan.
Okay, so there has been no budgeting and no borrowing for this project?
Just, I think we borrowed for the uh traffic study uh that that Lee's been doing here.
Okay. Do you remember what that? And that's this study that we're doing now? Is that this study?
Mike, you remember on that? I I think what what so Jerry, you had Jerry, oh, sorry.
My question is gonna be, how much does this study cost?
Uh, I can second tell you here. Trying to find it. Oh, um. He was, I think it was sixty-five hundred.
Okay.
And so That's right.
Okay.
Okay, and and so I did, I guess I didn't realize until the consultant said it tonight that we don't uh qualify for any county assistance on any improvements that we might make.
Um, I really, I mean, what what he meant, I mean, I mean, I, he said it, but the the thing is, if it, if it shows up as being warranted, then we are on much better footing requesting shared funding with Dane County on it. But if it doesn't meet the warrants, then our position is is very diminished in in requesting shared funding with the county.
Hmm. Okay, um. And to me, that's a, that's a big item, obviously. I mean, when you're talking about uh doing signals or roundabouts, so that there's a huge cost related to that. And not that it wouldn't, not that it wouldn't be worth it to make it safe. I'm just, uh, it's something I had not thought of before. And it's something to throw in the uh mix when you're making a decision on this. Um, and when I'm starting to hear about all these other possible solutions to make it safer, you know, like uh making lanes, dedicated turn lanes, making uh temporary bump outs. Having, I think we already have police presence there. Um, and we could all, I've also seen beacons over the road that are very visible. So I, um, the the one thing I think we should act on pretty quickly, if we can, is if we could go back to the uh uh the slide where you were showing the vegetation and the trees. And I'm talking about the trees on the um north side of the road. The very first slide you had. Yep. Yep. Okay, stop, stop, stop. That tree right there, you can see that thing's been banged quite a few times there. And that's because it does get hit. So and again, that's, that's not a village tree. So I don't know how we could get that out of there, but that tree and then the evergreen tree that is west of there, that one. If those could be removed, the right turn there from Perry Parkway would be, uh, I think, much safer.
Uh, Jerry, I I first thank you very much for your for your comments and questions about this. Uh, regarding, um, you mentioned beacons. One thing I want to be a little cautious about beacons are is that you know, beacons, they flash. And for comparative purpose, I could sit here all meeting long and go like this, kind of like a beacon. After a while, you're gonna get bored by this and you're gonna look away. And that's what beacons can do over time. First of, you know, when they're first on, hey, there's a beacon, there, you know, a yellow beacon. I bet, you know, it's alerting me of something. But over time, as that yellow beacon keeps going, we're talking days and weeks and months, people get desensitized by it. And so, you know, that's where something like, you know, pan here a little bit. These uh rapid rectangular flashing beacons are very effective in that they only light up when the ped button is pushed. So it's not going on continuous. And that makes a, that that's the effectiveness of it is that as a motorist, you may go by there ten, twenty, thirty times and there's no pedestrian and you just continue on your way. But that one time that you do see them lit up, there's a reason they're lit up. And so you take note of that. So I understand your thought of putting beacons here kind of as a warning system, but what studies have shown is those continuous beacons, they start to de- diminish and desensitize uh motorists to it.
Okay, I think what he's meaning is the ones that are activated that actually on a trombone arm over over the intersection.
Yeah, I'm talking about something similar to you, you, the uh, the ones on Monroe Street, for instance.
Monroe, yeah.
Okay.
Monroe, Monroe and Prospect. Up there. I mean, those things are very effective, but again, I'm just throwing out possible things to do while we're waiting to qualify for the warrants because um what what is the county share on? Is it half? Is it thirty percent or what is it?
Well, this is an interesting, if I can interject here a little bit, this is an interesting question because um, we are scheduled actually, starting next year, to be doing this project with the county, which would be from Spring Street all the way down to just beyond, just beyond Perry Parkway. And and this is the next project. And and after that's done, which will include some spot curb replacement and repaving, um, we have some water main, all that kind of stuff. Um, when that's done, um, then that'll jurisdictionally transfer one hundred percent to the village. Okay? So, um, you know, I I don't I I don't think we, you know, we want to wait that. I don't think the county wants to wait that long. And I don't think we want to wait that long where
Okay, so
warranted.
Jeff, are you saying that if we do it in conjunction with the uh, uh, I forgot about the Janesville Street reconstruction? So if we do it in conjunction with that project, then the county would share in the improvements?
So I I doubt they would share in the improvements of the of the project, but I mean, we can always ask, but I I uh
Okay.
You know, typically, they they don't, typically, they're just trying to give us a road in great condition in its current state of arrangement.
Yes, yes, that's true. Um, and what about the trees? What about the two trees? Can those be part of that or?
Well, the trees, I mean, we could look at the, you know, we could look at the vision triangles of those. Um, the the difficulty is is the tree is on private property, not, I mean, I'm
I know.
Assuming so, it might be a shared tree. There are times though, when when we can approach, it doesn't look like it's a very healthy tree, to be honest with you. Um, and that's been really taken care of that. Well, there are times where we can go to a landowner and say, well, the village will come in and remove that tree. You know, because we're trying, you know, and Um, we can definitely do that, you know, another tree that we've looked at several times is the one off Oak Street, we all know where that one is, the one.
Yes.
You know, just up, up from this. Um, so, yeah, so removing trees can help, there's still a lot, like Lee said, we have a stop sign, we have the flashing beacon post. And, and a power pole there, and there's a lot on, there's a lot on that line, you can see it right now. Um, you know, so it's not likely that it's gonna be underground anytime soon.
Okay.
Um, and Lee, one of the questions, or one of the things I thought, maybe, maybe I'm right on this, maybe I'm wrong, but I think I'm right on this is. Usually what you see, you, you, when, when an intersection is kind of deemed. Working its way towards a warrant for a signal or roundabout. There's always these little things we can do to help improve the safety. And that's kinda, that's what we're talking about, you know, the, the, the increased sig, uh, increased markings, all of that type of stuff. But it's all kind of a, a Band-Aid of sorts.
Yep.
Towards, towards the, the um. End result, which is usually either a signal or a roundabout. And so, you know, I think, um, you know, looking at this from the standpoint as far as. Um, you know, the future, the future of this obviously will someday be a signal or a roundabout, it's just when do we wanna pull the trigger on that?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, uh, Jeff, great, great point, uh, that. If it's in the village's purview to keep this as a two-way stop. There's a myriad of things that can be done to keep, to improve safety uh, at this intersection. However, as you said, that, you know, especially with the reconstruction of Janesville coming on next year. Uh, you know, you'd rather do it once and, you know, short-term pain, long-term gain. Uh, to do something here as opposed to waiting five, six, seven, ten years. To then all of a sudden possibly tearing up the pavement to put in, let's say, signals. Um, with signals, it's a little easier uh, to, to do, uh, to, to do it in the, in the future. Because um, with the reconstruction, you could put in the, the conduit. With the reconstruction is just empty conduit, it costs minimal to, to put in, uh, the contractor puts it in and it just sits there. Um, when you wanted to put a signal, okay, then you feed the wire through the conduit, or maybe even have the wired in it already, all you need is just the. You know, the connection to the cabinet. Some signal systems uh, will use video cameras to help out, so you don't even need to worry about. Uh, conduits in the pavement, a little more pricey, but again, you, you spare cutting into new or newer pavement. So, yeah, there, there is, uh, if it's. The thought of to keep this as two-way stop control, to, to keep the mobility on Janesville, if that's the, kind of the priority. Then yes, there's a, a lot of things that could be done. But as you said, if the thoughts of everyone is, well, you know, maybe this is starting to look like a signal and talk like a signal and quack like a signal. Maybe we should, you know, start to think about a signal, there's things that you can actually do. With that, uh, with this reconstruct to kinda give you a leg up, so you don't have to go carving into, to pavement in the future. Things like, uh, as I mentioned, the conduit, uh, putting it in, reserving right away, like kinda layout, okay. You know, our power to this potential signal's gonna come from here, so we wanna make sure that we have adequate uh, power, there's no obstructions or anything. Our signal cabinet, we think is gonna go, you know, being hypothetical, I think the power I saw was here, so maybe the cabinet goes right here. Just make sure that, you know, you don't plant any trees or do any features that would wipe out that spot for the cabinet, so. There, there is some foreshadowing that you can do, uh, will, it may eventually become a signal, may never become a signal, but at least you kinda have that foresight. Of thinking about uh, uh, how that would lay out, uh. With a roundabout, if a roundabout were to be put in there, that is definitely more significant. Uh, in terms of uh, tearing up uh, pavement, and that'd be something that. If there truly was a thought about it, like, that's one of those things, like, if this is all gonna be tore up next year. That probably would be the time to put it in, so you, you can uh, kinda lump th- those pains together, so to speak.
Uh, any other board questions right now? Yes, Cory?
Sorry, um. From talking with the cross, hearing the crossing guards and hearing, you know, the pedestrian issues out there. It sounds like the pedestrian crossings east-west of the south leg of Perry Parkway are the bigger problems. People are looking to the left because they're turning right, and then pedestrians are crossing in front of the car and they don't get seen. One of the problems, I think, in the corridor is further to the south. We don't have any crossings of Perry Parkway to get to the other side until you get to that intersection. So I think if we put in a curb ramp at Thompson, it would enable people to cross the street at a place where you don't have traffic. Where you don't have those turning movements where they would, the pedestrian wouldn't be seen. And it would give people a chance to cross there safely if they knew that they were going to have to cross up by um, Janesville Street. Just another kind of lower cost item where if we could, you know, get across from there, I think it would give people another option to avoid that.
You're shilling me Cory, cuz I think they're reporting, they report those ramps today.
Alright, so then, uh, so Amanda, then Jenna?
Uh, thanks, um, so, I, I'd like. Someone to kinda remind me of how much we're looking at for a signalized intersection. Uh, and if there's a range, give me kind of a range with, with high-end, with video versus a, a very simple signalized. Uh, intersection. And then I have another question.
I guess Jeff, I think, I don't know if you recall the contracted amount for the signal at Janesville and Park. But that probably would be a, you know, a little, that's on a little bit of a higher end, cuz I don't think the. It, this is a tighter intersection, wouldn't necessarily need all the phasing and things like that, but that probably would be a good comp.
I think we were, I, I'm just going off of memory, so. Give me some grace on this, but I think it was in the three to five hundred range for signalization.
And, and that, that, those costs are, is the design, the construction, the equipment, all of that a- as well. Um, you know, I, on the lower end, I've seen signals going for, you know, a hundred fifty to two hundred. Uh, thousand, and that's the design and construction and equipment all, all as well, and. Um, but yeah, the more complex stuff you add, like the, the, the video detection, things like, you know. Um, you know, pad signal, the countdown timers, all of that, it starts to, to, to rack up the, the cost. Yeah.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted some idea what we're looking at. Uh, and then, um, if you back out of that Google Earth view just a little bit to show. Uh, the distances more between um, the intersections to Wolf and then Wolf to Park. Uh, Lee, you had mentioned how we might want to, uh, you know, make that left turn. Not a through lane also. Um, and I do like that idea, but if for some reason we didn't do that, I, I mean, which. Which is more dangerous or safer, I guess, in your opinion? It, would it be making uh, drivers avoid that trap left before getting to Wolf Street? Or would it be from making drivers merge from two lanes into one before we got to the south Perry interchange?
So, it, um, thank you for your thoughts first, uh, Amanda, on this. Uh, if you wanted to keep. This uh, lane configuration in check, in place. One thing I would say is you would need the, the lane merge sign, that goofy-looking line with the little squiggly line. Showing the, the merge, and then probably something like some painted arrows showing, you know, to, to move over. There may even need to be, you know, some delineations, kinda, uh, some, some marking delineation showing like, hey, move over. It's that time, it's a real tight space, I. I live in Mount Horeb and I've seen a couple roundabouts, like right afterwards, boom, there's a lane merge and like within a hundred feet, you have to move over, so. In, in tight situations like this, it, you can do that. Um, the drivers are not exactly happy about that, but in time, you, you kinda learn to get over. One disadvantage of that may be that. Um, if you do have multiple vehicles in each lane getting over, that might start to clog up this area because. We're all nice Wisconsin motorists and, no, no, you go, you go, and then you kinda starts to get that slow merge and that might. Bottle some stuff up here, um, not horrible, but just things to consider. Um, as for making this, you know, a left turn lane here. Um, you know, thi- things that would happen is, you know, perhaps at Park Street, you know, over, you know, just beyond Park Street or at Park Street. Um, you can have signage saying, you know, I've seen overhead signs saying, you know, left turn only. Um, seen uh, uh, pavement markings, left turn only, you know, a- as you approach. There's, there's things that you can do to visually alert motorists. Uh, about this, the further back you can alert them, alert motorists, the better. Um, however, I know that I think from the, from this point of merge from the roundabout, I think this is. About, I think it's less than a thousand feet, I think, um, you know what, I think I can just. Find my. So from about this point here. You know, eleven hundred feet, you know, a little less than a quarter mile away. Um, that is, going twenty-five miles an hour, that is a, a, a good distance to, to have someone merge over, but you. You will have a traffic signal to contend with right here, so, um, those kind of uh, advanced warning. Uh, implementations are, are, are only beneficial if this were to become a left turn lane.
Alright Jenna, do you have a question?
Uh, yeah, just a follow-up to the cost question. Um, how much does it approximately, I know this will be a rough estimate, but how much does it save to coordinate. Implementing a signal with the construct, the reconstruction of Janesville next year?
Well, I, I, I think there's always some, um, I mean. Honestly, we could probably work with Dane County in that, um, I think they could do it at a fairly. I don't wanna say, I mean, I, you know, it's just not something we've had a lot of discussions with them, but in the past, you know, the Dane County crews do a really nice job. They come in and, and we kind of, uh, like, like when we did Jefferson Street. Um, truly, the Dane County crews were the outstanding part of that contract, if you remember, we had a lot of problems with the other contractor we were working with. So, um, we'd have to discuss it with them, as far as it's something if they would um. Allow kind of tagging onto that project. Um, I think there was a time where, uh, the, the, the Deputy Highway Commissioner. Um, was, was saying, well, you know, you should do this one before you would do James, you should do the intersection before that you do Janesville Street. To allow a kind of a, a, it to be a thoroughfare that wouldn't be closed while we were shutting Janesville Street down. So, there's a lot, there's a lot of permutations to this, and um, a lot of things can happen, obviously, in the next year, year and a half, as we look. You know, this Janesville project, whether it is truly a twenty-twenty-one or a twenty-twenty-two project. I, you know, my rec, I know, I think we share all the things, everything before I put a kind of a recommendation for you.
Alright, so I know we have some folks watching, um, and if you would like to make a comment. If you could just, um, let me know in the chat function, just, um, put in there that you would like to make some comments, we'll call on you. Um, I know that we have a Chris Patterson that would like to make some comments, so at least if, um, if you want to unmute. Mr. Patterson, and then the floor is yours, if you would just wanna tell us, repeat your name and where you live, Chris, that would be great.
Sure, um, I, Chris Patterson, uh, live on eight thirty-nine Janesville Street, so we live at this corner. Um, we see it day-to-day, uh, so we know what really happens here, um, just a couple of. Uh, you know, it's gotten obviously way worse since the road goes through the high school. Um, one comment is the, the light crossing for the pedestrians is not where ninety percent of the kids cross. They always cross on our side, so they cross on the east side crossing when they're coming north and south, they cross on the east side of that. Um, I think it was put there because it's safer to cross there, cuz you have to be right turns. However, kids are gonna be kids, they're gonna, they're gonna take the fastest route, I think of more, we see more adults go over to that side than, than, than school-aged children. So, I would really strongly consider putting that on the east side just for the kids. Um, as much of a pain in, in the butt it is to turn out of our intersection every single day. Our concern is about the pedestrians and the, and the biker safeties, we've seen kids hit. Um, we've also seen a lot more near misses than you even, uh, than get reported. Um, and obviously during the fall and spring, the, uh, the crossings are, are much more, um, you know, they happen a lot more with pedestrians. Um, as far as the turn lanes and, and uh, creating those, uh, for the most part, people do that anyway. People make two lanes out of when you're going um, north from Perry. Um, a lot of times people make two lanes when you're going south, and then people usually go around cars that are turning left. That are go, that are turning left to go onto Perry, um, so people usually make two lanes out of it already. I don't think it would hurt to make it marked, um, but I don't think it would help the traffic that much. Because with the exception of a few maybe brand-new drivers, people already do it. Um, I like the idea of the, like extending curbs out to make it less distant, distance, and also to, um. You know, for, to people to see pedestrians better as a, as a shorter-term solution. Um, I love roundabouts as a driver, um, however, I don't see a lot of pedestrians blocking through roundabouts and, and I think they would hate that. Um, so for, you know, for the kids' sakes, I think it would be uh, probably better to have a stoplight, um. And uh, and I guess, you know, the only other comment I'll make, I know it's a lot of money, but, you know, we passed two referendums that are way, way more than this. And I, I think the public is behind a, uh, a solution at this intersection because they have a lot of kids that are. At, you know, crossing it, and like I said, we see it day-to-day, so, um, that's, uh, that's it for my comments. I, I do wanna thank you, Lee, for uh, the work you did, it was really helpful to sit through that and, and learn what you uh, did, uh, got from your study.
Thank you for your comments, Chris.
Thank you, Chris, any, any board members have any comments or questions for Chris? Alright, okay, thank you for your comments, Chris. Are there other folks on the call from the public who would like to speak, if you just wanna let me know in the chat function? Just let me know if you wanna speak, otherwise we will, we'll keep going here, um, further board comments on this or questions? Um, so Jeff, maybe it's time for you to make that recommendation?
Yeah, well, I think, um. You know. Looking at this, I mean, the, one of the things that really surprised, not surprised me, but that was proven in this. Is, you know, we still, the, the main, main problems deal with school drop-off and pickup times. And, you know, it's not, if you're out there during almost all other times of the day, this intersection is a. A very normal intersection, and we have very similar. Tight intersections that operate on Jefferson Street in two locations, um, I think like the Jefferson slash Oak. Street intersection and everything like that, um, and similar kind of probably crash statistics. So, but, you know, Perry Parkway, like it or not, is a main thoroughfare for the village. And, um, I think it is smart if we're looking towards. Um, the future of this, I think with the amount of traffic that we have coming from the high school, we have capacity at the high schools. That means our high school's gonna continue to grow, we're always gonna have inexperienced drivers. I, I mean, I think the long-term solution here is signalization. Um, you know, signals, signals are, in my opinion, far, far more safer. Than a roundabout when it comes to pedestrian safety, um, and there's a lot of people that feel differently on that, but, uh. So, from that standpoint, um, I think it would. Be wise for us to work with Dane County and our plans for the um. eventual jurisdictional transfer of that, to look at what kind of signalize, uh, signaling we would do. Um. You know, I, I mean, the, the main problem, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, Lee, but. Main problem that we've had is, I mean, we just have a huge number of cars that are turning right in the morning. And, and, uh, you know, this de facto turn lane, I think there's some things we can do in the interim. And I, I think we would, uh, try to do some of those small things like the bump outs and everything like that. You know, we, we've kind of been doing things at this intersection now for three years. We started with the, um, what do we call those signs? The, the pedestrian crossing signs that go out in the middle of the intersection or in the middle of the the crosswalk and they've got the springs on them and.
The tents or the islands. Yeah.
Yeah. You know, that people hit them all the time and, and then we had problems because of a lot of the trucks pulling out from Wisco onto Janesville Street and we had to move it way back to, to be able to accommodate that. We've done the, the installation of the flashing geckons. Um, we painted the crosswalks and everything like that. And I think we're doing things and I think it's improved the safety. But, you know, we're a growing village and I think we have to acknowledge that this is a main thoroughfare through the village. And, um, I think Lee's study supports that signalization would do nothing but benefit pedestrian safety and help in the level of service to the intersection. But I think it's a wise investment for us.
All right. Thank you. Yes.
So Jeff, the, the one thing, Jerry's suggestion about the, the right turn in those trees, I'd like to see that. Let's, if we can look at that as well. If we can clean, clean that up for visually when people are turning right. Is that possible?
Oh, yeah, yeah. I mean, we, anything's possible with this. I mean, we can work with, we can work with a lot of, you know, a lot of people as far as whether it's, um, the apartments. Um, I don't think we have a large right turn movement, Lee, um, for southbound on Perry Parkway. Yeah. And so that, that's not necessarily, we have, we have some left turn movements. But the majority of movements are coming along Janesville Street, east and west and, um, northbound. At least in the morning, correctly.
That, that's correct. The, the heavy movements in the morning are the kind of the eastbound through on Janesville. And the northbound right, and then their reciprocals westbound through westbound left in the, in the afternoon.
Jeff, it just seemed like a sort of a simple cost thing to kind of at least look at.
Absolutely. I, I think if, you know, if the board gives us direction as far as to say, okay, let's, let's try to implement some additional short-term cost effective measures, we will find budget and, and, you know, whether it's the, the bump outs and the painted area, painted areas. Striping, that type of thing. Those, those are cheap things we can do and implement those quickly, but I, I still think we need to look long-term and, and, or signalize.
And gee, just one last thing for Jeff. On the bump outs and, um, it, so the kids walk out on the bump outs and I mean, is, are they going to be, want to work, walk out on those on the street?
Yeah. I mean, it's, it's technically, it's kind of, the bump outs are kind of an extension of the pedestrian way then. It's not, it's not a driveway. Now, the, the only protection is, like I said, there really is no protection. If a car comes at those, those little delineators flex immediately and, and we've, you know, I don't remember, we use those over on Perry Parkway at the school. Um, and we're replacing those. I order more of them and more stick pads and we put them down all the time. But, but it has worked.
Okay. All right. I, I just, just want to make sure it works. All right.
The only other thing I want to throw into this, and I don't want to complicate it because I know we're going along here, but, but at the Wolf and Park Street intersection, you know, the village board and, and plan commission has seen some concept plans for development that's going to go on north of that intersection that will likely change the configuration of that intersection slightly with an entrance at that point. Does that make sense? So, so and Lee, Lee doesn't know about this, but we've, we've, uh, we've made them aware of the, the studies that have gone or the, the studies that have been done previously over there. His study and the study for the intersection. And as that section, as that property over there goes further into development, that intersection will look different, um, from that standpoint.
All right. Thank you, Jeff. Is there anyone that's interested in making a motion or the recommended motion or a new motion? Yes, Jenna?
Uh, Chief saying, Cough, put, uh, something in the chat. So I don't know if we want to hear that first.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. Yes.
Uh, thank you. I just wanted to make a quick comment. Um, if we do go with the bumper style sidewalk, whatever you call it. Anything different that our community is not used to, what we can do is partner with the school district to educate students that are crossing using those new mechanisms, whatever you want to call them, but we can also, we can really focus. This is a great study. It really gives us that age range and we can work with Amy Miller with the school district on better educating the students. Um, and then maybe having some support from the parents as well. And, uh, I think the crossing enforcement is really difficult, especially that intersection for us because it's so busy in such a short period of time. Uh, but I am glad that we were having that conversation about where we're on Janesville Street and it comes down to one lane. Um, I would say probably half the people kind of automatically assume the left is for the left turn, right is to go straight. But, uh, what is really, um, creates a dangerous situation is, is you get two cars that all race to get ahead of one. And, uh, there are kids that get on a bus across the street from QuickTrip. And then you get right through that intersection and boom, there's your, a really problematic intersection. So, I hope we do something with that area that is very difficult for us to enforce anything. Because there's just no place to sit and observe it. So you literally have to keep driving, um, that stretch to catch any speeders.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Yes, Amanda, then jury. Oh, Amanda, we can't hear you.
All right. I don't know why that didn't work. Um, uh, I was going to make a motion. So if Jerry wants to go first.
No, I just, I was just going to ask what motion Jeff was leading up to. I didn't hear a recommended motion. Uh, and also as part of that motion, when you say, you're looking for a, a, a long-term solution. Can you define that in years? I mean, if we make a motion, when can you tell us when you'd be thinking about putting that in the budget? What year?
Well, I, I think there is, I, I like Mike's, uh, recommended motion that he has under five A there. Which is to direct the village administrator to include the Janesville Street and South Perry Parkway intersection improvements in the village's 2021 capital improvement plan and the village's administrative proposed 2021 annual budget.
Okay. That's a, that's a nice motion, but Mike, where are you going to put that in 21 or 22 or?
I, I'm, I'm saying it's going in the 21 budget. We, so the idea is that going back to the assistant highway commissioner's, his idea was we would do this intersection with a signal next year before we do Janesville in 22.
Okay. And then, okay. Very good. So again, it would, uh, part of the capital improvement plan. And then will we be making these other changes? Now, we're starting to plan those other changes and implement those.
Well, we, I think, I think we could do, I mean, we could, if it, if, if Lee agrees that say, say adding, you know, uh, like we, we've done in other places. If he says, you know, yeah, we would be okay putting a strike, you know, to, to strike the right turn only for northbound on Perry Parkway. If we added bump outs, uh, to certain areas, um, those don't require, uh, I mean, that's something that we can do very, very quickly and efficiently, you know, for under a thousand bucks type of thing. So.
Okay.
You know, I think.
Do you want any mention of that in this motion?
Yeah, I think you could add to the motion just to include and also include temporary measures. As, uh, as deemed necessary by Public Works.
Okay. Do you have, Amanda, you started making a motion. Do you, you understand what Jeff is saying?
Yeah, actually, that's exactly what I was going to say in my motion. So maybe I should have gone first. Yeah, I was going to say, uh, my motion would be to, um, direct, uh, village staff and Public Works to make, uh, small cost effective safety changes now, uh, and then also to budget for the future as, uh, in the recommended motion, uh, to include the Janesville Street and South Perry Parkway intersection improvements in the village's 2021 to 2025 capital improvement plan and the village administrators proposed 2021 annual budget.
All right.
I'll go second now.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Cory.
Uh, could we add to that motion to have Public Works and maybe it's already pseudo included, but just have discussions with the county relative to making the dedicated left and through lane on, on Janesville Street at Wolf?
Yeah, yeah. We would not.
Yeah. The second is fine with that too.
We would not do anything there, Cory. I don't think without involving Dane County just because it's still their road.
Yeah, but I, I guess what I'm saying is I would like to do that. So if we can have some discussions there to, to get that rolling, I would like to see that as well.
Yep.
Uh, I guess, I guess Cory and Jeff, I don't want to interject here, but I think Jeff, you mentioned there's a development that's potentially looking to get access as the north leg. That, you know, unless this, you know, maybe a study needs to be done to look at that to see if any intersection items need to be done because that by adding a fourth leg, that could, if it's going to be at the physical intersection, that could change how the signal operates. And not to say that the exclusive left and the through lane would still be there regardless of the development, but there's, you know, going from three legs to four legs, it, it can change the dynamics of an intersection. Again, I don't mean to step on toes about that, what have you, but just something to consider that you don't do it right away. And then all of a sudden something happens like, oh man, we need to change it again. So a-again, just something to note.
Right. And we've been talking to the developers, Lee, kind of, and, and kind of my last comment to the developers about a week ago was you need to get a traffic kind of engineer onboard and, uh, and they had asked who had done the previous one. So I'm providing them your information for that. But, uh, but yes, I mean, that's, that's all part of it. I, I everything's kind of connected down here. So we want to make sure we're not doing something in one location that's going to shoot us in the foot in the other.
Nope. Great.
All right. So we have a motion and a second. Any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Lee, for your work on the study. Thank you, Chris, for your comments. And thank you, everybody, for your very thoughtful discussion.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Lee.
Nice job, Lee.
All right. So now we will go on, uh, moving on five A approval lands. We don't have any. So we will go to six A approval of vouchers. So tonight we have vouchers in the amount of nine hundred twenty-one thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-six cents. Can I get a motion to approve on the floor, please?
Baller go make that motion. Or you've made it, Balla go second it.
Okay, sure. So I made the motion to approve and Balla seconded. Uh, what questions do we have?
May I continue?
Yes, please do.
Um, number twenty-seven oh seven. The chip seal. And I just, I don't have a question as much as a comment. I really think in, in all my years as a resident of the village and I've seen various products used, I think initially, and I emphasize initially, this is really a good chip seal. But we'll see what winter does to it.
Yeah. We've, we've used this in the past year. It's a granite. It's a granite product. Um, and we've been happy with it. Thanks, Jerry.
Okay. Number four zero zero five is, is the, uh, I believe it's the automation or the security on the senior center door. If Rachel's online, I'm just curious to know how that's working out for them.
Um, so far it's working very well. It allows us to know when there's somebody at our front door. And if we don't happen to have a receptionist out there, it allows us to keep our building secure. And we're very happy with the system. It's nice to be able to talk with who's out there.
Good. Good. Then it's worth the money then. Number forty-seven forty-six is, has got an explanation that I, I need to hear the backstory on and that the description is tow-in vector.
One line from last comment. Uh, yeah. So.
Our new very expensive factor.
Right, right. So that's our most expensive piece of equipment. Um, we had, uh, problems with it. It actually was not going more than about a couple of miles an hour. Um, and so we knew there was something wrong. We had to have it towed up to, uh, Madison. And that was the cost to have that towed. I, I did question why it was so expensive. With the type of vehicle it is, they have to actually disconnect the drivetrain to be able to tow, tow that vehicle. So then the good thing was it was a faulty sensor. Um, and it was repaired under warranty. Um, but unfortunately the towing was not part of the warranty.
Okay. What about our insurance? Will that cover any of that? No, Mike's taking his, Mike's taking it. No.
Those are the insurance coverage for that. Nope.
Okay. Just thought I'd ask. Number fifty-nine seventy, uh, Napa, is that the local Napa here in Oregon?
Correct.
So do you think there's any chance they'd, uh, forgive us the 28 cents finance charge?
Um, yeah, I can, I can make a call on that if you'd like. Or spend a hundred dollars chasing down 28 cents for us. Yeah. Like, that's just kind of one of those things. I, sometimes bills, bills, especially with some of the scheduling and meetings we've had, sometimes.
Right.
They carry on.
I understand that. The timing was, yeah. Uh, six oh four five. Nina, uh, the description was street improvements and it's, uh, three thousand two hundred and seventy-one dollars miscellaneous.
But those are castings. Those are castings, okay. Castings as we, before we do mill and overlays, we go through and you'll, you'll see in here somewhere else where we get, uh, leveling rings for the, for the manholes and we replace castings that either have leaky tops or seals.
All right. Uh, seven oh five seven, Rinders, that's the Toro mower.
Yes.
Was that, uh, uh, something that broke on it or?
A hundred thousand. Well, we have two Toros, the hundred thousand dollar, that was the purchase of the brand new one. And, um, we had the, we, we had a replacement set of blades, which is pretty normal. I did, there was a, uh, incident where one of the tires was cut and the, and the rim was broken on, uh, the new, the new, and that was repaired. Those happened, I believe it was probably a broken bottle or something that couldn't even be seen when it, uh, when it broke that.
Very good. Um, number seventy-two fifty, it's Stafford Rosen. The, uh, it's, the description is COVID. And it's, uh, twenty-three seventy-nine. I had an earlier conversation with Mike and I just ran that by him. He said that was for, uh, mask, some masks.
Oh, Jerry, I misunderstood your question. No, that, that's for Matt's time working on COVID, but we are going to submit that under the, uh, the CARES Act.
Oh, okay.
That's eligible. I'm, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question before.
What, what was he doing on COVID? Because we've got the county health department that is the.
I, I still include Matt on our, uh, weekly department head meetings just to make sure we're keeping things legal.
Very good. And then, um, I guess last is the Staley AC bit for fourteen thousand dollars. And I, I understand that that's, um, in the village hall. I thought it was at the senior center. So.
But Jerry, that's under eight A on the agenda.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Yeah.
I got a hint myself.
Yep.
I'm done.
Other questions? Yes, Cory. Oh, then Amanda.
Uh, item sixty-six thirty, which is for pest control. Is that like multiple months or something? Cause there's a lot of duplicates and I guess.
They, they did not, he was not dropping off bills and stuff. Um, he was still doing the pest control, but he was not dropping off bills uh, for March, April, May and June, I believe. For March, April, May, and June, I believe.
Okay, so what's there is basically for four months?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, Amanda.
Uh, yeah, back to the Stafford and Rosenbaum seventy-two fifty. I noticed one thing, that the school district Pittsburgh. Development, it looks like it was going to say. Is he working? Is that the school district? Water supply, water sewer thing we talked about?
May I ask, I do anything on it? That's just the time, we've had two long discussions at board meetings and that's some of that time is charged that. He hasn't sort of preparing any agreements or anything like that.
Okay, that's just his time for us talking about it.
Correct.
Oh.
And me talking to him about a little bit too as well. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
You have a quick one.
Yeah, go ahead, Randy.
Uh, Jeff, I think for you, nine oh five. The LEDs is, I'm just curious, is that from Tin Man?
Nine oh five?
Nine oh five. PJ Electric Supply? Is that Tin Man or not?
No, it was not.
Okay, different.
No, actually, I think that might be. We had to buy some LED bulbs for the water tower. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the water tower for the Lincoln Road Water Tower.
The one by me, okay.
Yeah, when US Cellular was out there doing the work, their contractor noted that we have a lot of bulbs out.
Okay.
Climbing inside the tower that light the family and everything, so.
Okay, thank you.
Piece of those.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any last questions on vouchers? All right, Peggy, do you want to do a roll call vote then?
Glish?
Yes.
Keeverson?
Yes.
Horton?
Yes.
Jacobson? Carpenter?
Yes.
Ballig?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Going on to item seven, this is proclamations and announcements under board comments. We have the high school senior parade. So the village board members and village administrator would like to thank the Oregon Police Department for helping to coordinate the parade. It was well received by the community. And if board members, if you're like me, you've gotten lots of really, really nice positive comments and emails. So personally, I'd like to thank Chief Jenny for assuring us that she had time to do it and being willing to work with parents to do that. Thank you for your initiative on that because I'm not. I'm not sure the board would have wholeheartedly embraced it if you hadn't said we can do it. So. And then I'd open it up to the rest of the board for comments. If anyone has anything else, sir.
So Jeannie, I'll just say, I was, went and watched it and it was just, it was terrific for them. I mean, you know, I don't know how many hundreds of cars they had, but. They were having a great time and it was just fun to sort of wave to them and congratulate them on graduating. So it was, it turned out terrific. It was great. I'm glad we did it.
Yeah, yeah, and I sent Chief Jenny a screenshot of a text I got from a parent who was in that parade. He made a point of telling me that every officer that was stationed at every intersection also personally congratulated each graduate as they walked by. Or drove by and he said that was so, it was so touching and it was obviously genuine and authentic and. So please, please thank your officers for us, chief. They obviously have the community at heart here. Any other comments? Yeah, thanks. Then I'll go on to staff comments. We have a list there of upcoming virtual meetings. Anything else, staff? Yes, Mike.
Jeannie, so I'm going to tomorrow, so I already have the proposals from the search firms for my job. So I'm going to, I'm going to actually send them out tomorrow to the board members. You have an extra couple of days to read them. There's three of them to read. And Randy, I've made hard copies for you. I'll leave them at the, on the table in the village hall.
And Jeannie, just one question for Mike. Mike, the July twenty-second, the joint with towns. I know that that was talked about being at the high school. Is that still our intent?
The intention is that if people want to attend, they can go to the high school. And then we've also set up a Zoom meeting.
Okay.
It'll be, it's very clear when you see the agenda, you can either. Either go there or do Zoom.
Okay.
Please set that up for us.
All right, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Ballig has a question now. Why, why do we have them? Why is it at the high school?
We're trying to provide as much. Space as we can for people that may want to attend. In the Innovation Center, Jerry, upstairs on the second floor.
Okay.
The senior center building just wasn't big enough for people that everybody wants to attend.
Thank you.
Sure.
But board members, obviously, I'm going to be attending via Zoom. Don't, don't feel like you have to. I'll be, I'll be in my office here.
Yep, me too. Yep.
No, I, I totally intend to join via Zoom, but I guess I would just surprise that it's a location is being offered. As opposed to. Being on your computer.
Well, not everyone does Zoom meetings, Jerry.
Right, right.
Yeah, and so these are the towns, so we have to accommodate them as well.
Right. I wouldn't be surprised if they all don't have. Internet access out there. In every location.
Yep.
Any other staff comments? All right, we will go on to item eight. Communications and miscellaneous business. First item is a discussion and possible action. Regarding emergency repair, replacement of village hall, air conditioning, and rooftop units. We were recommended motion to approve the proposal from Staley Plumbing and Heating. For the repair in the amount of fourteen thousand seven hundred ninety-three dollars with funding coming from. Fund four one four capital improvements. Someone like to make that motion?
If you need, this is Randy. I'll make a motion.
Okay. All right, so you have a motion and a second by, motion by Glish and a second by Cory. And questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item B, discussion and possible action regarding the twenty nineteen Wisconsin Act. One six six, which is from the Senate Bill two oh three. A little background here, this legislation allows the village board to designate by ordinance certain village staff, for example. The village clerk and the deputy clerk to approve new and renewal, which are two-year alcohol beverages. Operators licenses or bartender license. Rather than sending them through the village board. If the board would like, we could ask Attorney Druggie to prepare such an ordinance. And it would be clear that applications which the police department has identified as having an issue with. Would still come to the village board for consideration. And so I think Mike is looking for some discussion on here. If we're interested in preparing such an ordinance, it would take. Off some of those things off of the back of our agendas where we are approving bartenders licenses for folks who've been approved by the police. So any discussion or thoughts on that?
Hey, Randy?
Yes, Lee.
I like the idea and I also like the piece that's included about if there's any, any issues that they would come back, come to us. So I like that.
Okay, yeah, Jenna.
Just wanted to know, do we have an opinion, is staff comfortable with doing that? If they are comfortable, I'm totally okay with them doing it as long as they've been approved by the police, so.
I've been asked to actually put it on the agenda for discussion by the staff.
Ballig has a question. Any idea what it's going to cost to draft this ordinance?
I think Matt, give me Matt's answer.
I think this is about an hour, about an hour of work, so. Whatever the rate is.
Fifty bucks, about fifty bucks.
Closer to, closer to a hundred and fifty, Jerry, two hundred.
Okay, all right. That's right, I forgot. It is twenty twenty, isn't it?
Yep.
Thank you.
Mike, do you, do you want a motion on this?
If, if the majority of the board wants to do it, Matt, Matt will hear that and will prepare the orange too.
Okay.
But I want to, you know, I'm just asking the question, should we proceed with it? I go, yeah.
Are we in agreement that this is a good idea?
Thumbs up or?
Yes. All right, I'm not hearing any dissent, so I think that's a yes. All right.
So Matt will prepare the orange. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. This is item C, Police Chief Report. We have four things here. First is. Discussion and possible action regarding contract for purchase of services between the Oregon Police Department and Healthy Minds LLC. We have a recommended motion to authorize the chief to sign the contract. Chief Jenny, do you want to tell us a little bit about this?
Yes, this is a. Project I've been working on for several years now. This is a. Organization in the city of Madison that offers it specific to law enforcement and first responders. But it. It's a, they offer quite a few different programs, but the programs I'm specifically interested in. Are is the annual wellness checks where each of our sworn and non-s sworn employees will go. And they're paid, they go up to this facility and they meet with a counselor. These counselors are trained. To help people through traumatic events. I think it's important for our clerical to go as well because they are. Hearing some pretty graphic details of certain crimes. We want to make sure they're doing their well-being as good as well. This would happen every year. Whatever they say at these counseling sessions stays there. Nothing's reported back to me. This is all about. The better of, for the betterment of the employee. The other program that I'd like to implement is, it's just a program rollout and ongoing training. This is just to train our officers on what this annual wellness check will be and make them feel more comfortable with moving forward with it. The last one is a supervisory consultation training. I think this is excellent as well. It provides our. Supervisors and leaders within our organization. Good foundation of what, when to identify. If something's going on with an officer's. Wellness and then also what to do with that. This is a. Organization that many other police departments within Dane County use. They talk very highly of it. And based on what we will get out of it, it's actually quite affordable.
Excellent. I love that. That sounds good to me. Questions? Yes, I see Amanda. Go ahead, Amanda.
Thanks. Chief Pankop, I'm. The annual wellness checks, I think that's a great idea, is. Is included in this or in another policy? Do you have? Some sort of. Officer initiated. Check-in after a traumatic event. Do they have a vehicle to do that? Is that part of this or is that something else?
That's a different component that is part of our policy for officer-involved critical incidents. They call it a sort of debrief phase where we will do a full staff debrief to just assess everyone how they're doing. My second week with Oregon, I was involved in a shooting and I went through a debrief. It was very helpful. Because your mind's racing, you don't know what of all happened. You're only one body in this entire scene. And to know and hear what other people were doing, it really helped process things and hear what they felt about it. But we, yes, we do have that part of our policy and it's very helpful.
Okay, and then just one more question real quick. Do you feel like the annual check-in as part of this is that? Typical or, I mean, would semi-annual be better? How do you? You know, for just a regular check-in, is annual?
I, yeah, I think it's good, that's a good question. I think. Annual is a good start and it breaks that stigma of law enforcement asking for help when they need it. It opens that door for them, so when they do need it beyond annual tech. You know where to find it. They've built rapport with a counselor with this facility who, and again, they have a lot of experience. So that this type of organization too is much different than our typical EAP program. And I do think, starting with annual and seeing where this goes. There are other programs out there too. There's peer support programs and things like that that grants are offered for, but I thought this would be a good. First step. And then move on from the actual staff response to this. But I've talked quite a bit with several of our officers about this and my intention of getting this going. And I've gotten very positive comments about it, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Jenna.
If we're ready, I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Sure, yeah, you can make that. To, so you're approving the. Authorizing Chief Pankop to sign the contract on behalf of the village.
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there further discussion or questions? All right, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Number two, we have a discussion on possible action regarding a revised domestic abuse policy. Do you want to walk us through this one?
Yes, so. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Marcy's Law. It was recently passed, but unfortunately due to COVID and some other challenges. Kind of slowed the process down of us making these changes. Just to give you guys a real brief synopsis of what happened that caused us to start. In nineteen eighty-three, a woman by the name of Marcy Nichols was stalked and ultimately. Murdered by her ex-boyfriend. And. One week later, after, actually the day of her funeral, after the funeral, her parents were at the grocery store picking up a loaf of bread and bumped into the. The killer who had ended their daughter's life. And here, they had no idea he had been released and it obviously was very traumatic for them. And what, what kind of stemmed from that then is. Marcy's parents really, and the rest of her family really fought for more victim rights. More notification for the victim. And that's where we get into our domestic abuse policy revision. We already supply all victims of a crime with a victim information form. On this, the form itself, and it's at the end of the policy. It's a, provides that just a ton of information related to victims of sexual assaults. Domestic abuse, child abuse, and then also contact information. For the Dane County Jail, victim witness, things like that, and. Really what's changed for our agency, we already do quite a bit. We actually do quite a bit extra. You know, one of the changes we made last year was with domestic abuse victims. After the arrest has been made thirty days, sixty days, and ninety days after that original arrest, we make contact. To check on how the victim's doing. You know, I would say. Probably sixty to seventy percent of the time, the victim doesn't want any involvement from us. We respect that, but it is good just to have that. Possibility of, then they can reach out to us if they have any further questions or need assistance. But really, the change to our policy isn't the policy itself, it's the. One of the attachments to the end of the policy and that's the victim information form. Marcy's Law. Essentially now requires even more information be provided to the victim about victims' rights and things like that. So we worked with the Department of Justice to make sure we have the now most updated version. That we're consistent with Marcy's Law as well.
All right, thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion or have a question? The recommended motion is to approve the revised domestic abuse policy.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Cory, sir, a second.
I'll second it.
All right, there was a second by Amanda. Any further questions on that? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you for that, chief. And item three, like to give us a status of the police lieutenant promotion and police officer hiring.
Yes, so this week will be a busy one for us. Wednesday and Thursday, we're conducting the first round of police officer interviews. They will sit in front of a panel and be asked questions and the people on the panel will be. One will be a field training officer and the other two are patrol sergeant. I'm sorry, one will be the detective sergeant and the other will be a patrol sergeant. And we'll go through that. We are going to face a few challenges because of COVID and. Several of our candidates are deployed overseas, so we're going to try to accommodate, but we. And I told the police commission this as well. Since, I would say in the last five years, we've averaged about forty-three applications for an open spot. Anytime we've posted to hire. This time, and it's really interesting because of the current law enforcement climate, but I believe we were, we were up to eighty-seven applications for a police officer position here. That's higher. that's higher than what I've heard from other comparable agencies to us in Dane County. So that tells me we're doing things right here. Um, and people really want to come and serve our community. So really good to see um, out of that eighty-seven-ish, uh, about half are already certified. Which is uh, nice because then it's uh, not as much of a a gamble uh, and paying a lot of money to send them to the academy. We kind of know where they stand and we're able to kick them right into the field training program, get them going. So very excited about that.
I'm coiled today, period.
Um, the police officer promotion, uh, that we will start interviews Friday. Um, we have four applicants. And they Friday will sit in front of two different panels. One is a community panel. And the other is um, a command staff level panel of outside agents. Um, I tried to find as many as I could outside of Dane County, just so that I'd have some fresh ears as well. Um, and you know, they could get to know our, our staff. On this initial interview. Once we're past these interviews for the lieutenant, they then will uh, I'll go through and evaluate the um, test scores for those interviews. And then ultimately they come to me for a final interview. Um, and then I go to the commission with my findings.
Excellent. Yeah, that is going to be a busy week.
Exciting though.
Yeah, any, any questions for Chief on, on those items? I'm glad that we're moving forward. That's, it's a good thing. And congratulations on so many applications for that, the officer position. That, that bodes well for our community.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, and then last under uh, police chief report, we have the review of monthly reports. Anything you want to highlight here, Chief?
Um, so as we moved into uh, COVID, I, I obviously things got busier um, on my side. That's why I'm definitely looking forward to getting a lieutenant to help divvy up some of this work. But um, you know, as you'll see, um, the observer ran a story on it, domestics were up. You know, realistically, those are still higher than we want to see. Um, as well as our contacts with people in mental health crisis. But even, even in uh, June, uh, we had eight OWI arrests. That's high for us. Um, and a majority of those eight OWI arrests were uh, highly intoxicated and or under the influence of a drug as well. I don't know if I have it on the June list yet, but I have, uh, I talked briefly with Mike about this. Um, I have enrolled in a program that Dane County is putting on uh, regarding hate crime. And um, it's, it's been actually quite enjoyable. I'm working with uh, members of victim witness. District attorneys, the, the DA himself, the deputy district attorneys. Um, and we're just working through some of these uh, issues. Right now, we're in the first phase where we're learning about the history of African Americans. And uh, we have a lot of homework for it, but I actually really am enjoying it. So I'll, I'll try to keep you guys um, updated on how that goes.
Very good. Questions for Chief on the reports? Excellent. Thank you very much for your work, Jenny. We appreciate it. All right, moving on to item uh, D. This is discussion and possible action regarding approving the village bargaining team for upcoming negotiations with the police union. We have a recommended motion to approve personnel, public safety and protection committee chair Jenna Jacobson, village administrator Mike Grace, police chief Jennifer Pagan cop, police chief support services supporter supervisor Rudy Trace, and finance director Lisa Nowenska to serve as the village's bargaining team. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Amanda.
Second.
And a second by Cory. Any questions or discussion on this item? Thank you to all those folks for serving on that. Um, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item E, this is a discussion and possible action regarding resolution number twenty dash twenty-five, closing out and writing off of the DNR fund. Um, we have a recommended motion to approve resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five. And we talked about this at the last meeting, is that right, Mike? Or is this something new?
This came out of audit.
Oh, oh, yeah, right, right. So this is going to make Jerry happy, right?
I was gonna say, Balog will make that motion.
All right, we have a motion by Balog. Is there a second?
Jacobson will second it.
Thank you. A second by Jenna. Any, any further discussion on this one? All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you. All right, motion carries. Uh, item F, this is discussion and possible action regarding confirming hiring new summer LTEs in public works department. We have a recommended motion uh, to confirm the hiring of seasonal LTEs for public works, including Jared Mason, Kieran Connery, Patrick Piper and Thomas Alstead at the rates discussed in the memo dated July ninth, twenty twenty. Would anyone like to make this motion?
Judy, Randy, move.
All right, so Randy uh, making motion. Jenna, were you seconding it?
Sure.
Yep. All right, so a motion by Glish and a second by Jacobson. Any questions or comments on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item G, we have a discussion and possible action uh, regarding village administrators proposed twenty twenty-one budget schedule and direction. We have a recommended motion to approve um, that with a, with a note that the six month financial report will be available at our next meeting on July twentieth. Anyone feel like making that motion? Jenna?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, so the motion by Jacobson, is there a second?
Corey.
Okay, okay. Well, I think Cory's first. Second by, by Horton. Is there any questions on this? As usual, it's to be a busy budget such season. So yeah, so make sure all of those um, October meetings are on your calendar now. It's um, always, it's always best if we can all be at all of those meetings. All right, so we have a motion that's second, so we need to vote yet, right? So all those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, item H, discussion and possible action regarding the first draw of the Genesis Housing Grant. We have recommended motion to approve the amount of one hundred six thousand three hundred forty-nine dollars. Um, the total of the grant for FYI is one hundred sixty-eight thousand. And this is the first draw for them to um, pay for some work that they've been doing on that. Anyone like to make that motion? Jenna, we have a motion by Jacobson. Is there a second?
Randy.
A second by uh, Glish. Um, any questions or discussion on this? All right, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next item I, this is a discussion and possible action regarding the senior center surplus property. Um, Jerry, did you have a question on this one?
Um, no.
Oh, okay, sorry. I thought I remember from House was that you had a question on this one.
I know.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. All right, would anyone like to make this motion?
You need to move approval.
Okay, thank you, Randy. And a second by Cory. Any questions for Rachel? All those in favor.
Were you just, were you just trying to see if I was awake or what?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, thank you, Rachel. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, item J, discussion and possible action regarding resolution twenty dash twenty-four. Best EST, Flex Plan Rule, Secretary Cory Limit Amendment. So many words. Uh, would someone like to make a motion to approve that resolution?
Judy, I'm moving to Randy.
All right, thank you, Randy. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Amanda. Um, any questions or discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right, thank you. Motion carries. Uh, item K, uh, this is a review of the village's bicycle friendly community report card. Uh, Elise, anything that you want to go over on this?
Make sure I'm not muted. So, um, this is their report card from the bicycle friendly community program. Uh, it's a little hard to see here, but this is comparing in the gray. That's the average bronze uh, rated community compared to Oregon and the orange on the right-hand side. So a lot of categories we're doing really well on, including education and the schools and uh, the amount of our public works budget that's spent on um, you know, trails and bicycle-related infrastructure, but we've got um, definitely some improvements to make. And be working the next couple of months as well as on some of the budget proposals to, to get some of this low-hanging fruit uh, proposed, so we can keep moving forward on bike safety and access.
Sounds good. All right, any questions for Elise on the report? All right, thanks for providing that. Uh, item L is review of the Yehara Watershed Improvement Network Wins Annual Report. Any questions on this or Jeff, any highlights you want to go through?
Oh, I think this is just the, the continuing, I think it's our third official full year in the program. Continuing to go well. Um, it's an important part of cleaning up our lake system. But it's also something that regulatory-wise, we are partnering with the other communities um, to try to do this through what's adapt, what we call adaptive management, which is management of the entire watershed system versus just focusing just on our wastewater treatment plant. And the village is a very active partner in this. We contribute um, quite a bit of money annually to this, um, what we're doing this. Because A, it's the right thing to do and B, um, regulatory-wise, we need to do it.
Very well said. Any questions for Jeff on the report? Thank you for putting that in the packet. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Uh, item M is the FYI only, uh, the village's employee assistant program, second quarter utilization report. Uh, so just to give folks and I, uh, just a reminder that the, that the program exists and important for the employees to have available to them. Uh, item N, uh, this is FYI only, we have a library fundraiser on Saturday, July twenty-fifth from eleven AM to two PM at Ziggy's. It's going to be a brat, brat sale. So we thank Ziggy's for hosting that. So everyone, don't eat any brats between now and July twenty-fifth, so you can stock up on twenty-fifth. We expect everyone to buy ten to ten to twenty brats, right, Randy?
That's correct. So, so Judy, can I just say this, the bigger thing besides the brat sale is this, this whole day is our day. We're encouraging everybody in the village and beyond to go to the website or come down to Ziggy's with a donation. Our goal for that day is to raise twenty-five thousand dollars. And Judy gets credit for the twenty-five on twenty-five. She came up with that. So our goal is twenty-five thousand for that day. And we'll do it.
Yeah, so um, so, and this is also serving, just as a nice uh, kind of a another reminder to the community that we are, you know, working hard to build this library. Still looking for donations, something fun to do that. It's a good, we know that not everybody can write a check, but um, you know, maybe you can put a four dollar brat in your budget. So
Yeah.
Just another way to get the community involved and reminding everybody that we're building a library.
Just jump in the car and, and do a drive-through at Ziggy's and we'll get, get you your brats.
Yeah.
Are these virtual brats or real brats?
They're, they're actually, G, G, and Judy gets credit. She got, she got a, Judy, how much do you get from Metcalf?
Yes, Met, Metcalf is very graciously donating one thousand of their Johnsonville Brat Fest brats to this event.
Wow.
Ziggy's is also donating um, additional brats as well.
Yes, yes, and Ziggy's is donating brats. Um, we have Ziggy's, I think it's also donating ships. There's a lot of businesses and individuals in town donating lots of the supplies.
I, I donated, um, I'm trying to think, it's twenty or thirty cases of water. So we've been very fortunate to get some very generous businesses to help us.
And just not to leave out Fro Yo donated five hundred of cups of frozen yogurt as well.
Correct, yeah.
Exciting. And I would, I would expect that those donation lists will grow, only grow between now and the twenty-fifth. So as always, we have a very generous community and we, we thank them. So now we just, the community just has to show up and and consume all this food.
But in the meantime, if somebody wants to make a cash or a monetary donation, they could just go on the library website. Is that what I'm?
Yeah, if, if people wanted to, to do a pre-donation for the day of giving, they'll certainly take them, Jerry. To help us get, get to that twenty-five thousand, that would be fantastic.
Very good. I thank everyone for being involved in that.
All right, moving on to item P, this is COVID nineteen information. Uh, first up, we have senior center updates. Rachel, do you want to go forward on that one?
Judy, I think you skipped over Dane County.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Oh, item N, also I FYI, or O, this is the Dane County Anderson Park. Um, the Dog Park Project neighbor notices. So you'll see that um, in the, in the packet. It's, I think it's really exciting that that is moving forward. If you've seen the map. Um, this is going to be such a nice amenity to our community.
Right.
I'm, I don't even have a dog and I'm excited.
Including a paved trail from the end of South Main Street all the way down to the dog park at A.
Yep.
Yep. So many great things have happened here.
Yep. Yep. And if you uh, if you go out Union Road, you'll see they're already, they've already installed a driveway into the dog park. So or the not-quite-ready dog park. But the wildflowers are in our wonderful display right now. And it's the property that is to the east of Union Road. Once you get past the um, Anderson Farmhouse there.
Yes, that, that would be excellent. So yeah, thank you. Thank you for that update. All right, now going on to COVID nineteen information, first one is senior center updates.
Yeah, we continue to be able to move forward a little bit. Um, our adult day program that reopened at the beginning of June with small groups of about five is now open to its full enrollment because we moved out to our main hall, which is a, a big enough room to accommodate everyone. So it's very interesting to keep everybody six feet apart and um, do that careful dance, but so far so good. Um, our council on aging met for the first time here in several months earlier in July. That was the executive board, the small group. There were six people here. Um, don't know how soon we'll be able to get the full council back, but our fingers are crossed. Our medical equipment loan closet has started to loan equipment out to members of the community again, and that's open to all ages. Um, we also are taking returns of equipment back. Those are all by appointment and they're kind of a faceless exchange um, in the parking lot. And meal deliveries, which had gone down to three times a week, um, when the pandemic started, have returned to five days a week now. Um, those are home-delivered meals. We have four routes, so we rely heavily on volunteers for that. And the Ziggy's meals do continue to be available to seniors um, on Wednesdays and Fridays as a drive-through program in our parking lot between eleven-thirty and twelve-thirty. And then people take their tickets from here over to Ziggy's to pick up their food. So um, our services are expanding a little bit. Um, hopefully things will eventually allow us to expand a little further. Very good. Yep, just wanted to make you aware.
Yes, thank you. Any questions for Rachel on that? All right, thank you. Uh, item two, under COVID nineteen information is the status of the Forward Dane Plan. Uh, we had an emergency order, uh, number eight go into effect. And uh, so this is the one that's starting today. Uh, everyone ages five years or older needs to wear a face, face covering or a mask when indoors, um, and around uh, people of their household. Per the order, people must wear a face mask, uh, covering their nose and mouth when in public. That includes businesses, healthcare settings, bleeding in line, public transportation. Um, even someone else's home. There are exceptions for certain activities such as eating at a restaurant. But obviously during those activities, you have to stay six feet away from individuals who are not in your same household or living unit. but obviously during those activities, you have to stay six feet away from individuals who are not in your same household or living unit. Um, and then, of course, uh, people are exempted if they have a physical, mental, or developmental condition that prevents them from wearing a mask. Um, and, oh, the county is planning to provide cloth masks to those in need. More information on how to obtain free masks is um available on the Dane County website. So um that is the, the order that's effective today. Any, any uh other updates, Mike, that you want to mention at all?
Oh, that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, item Q, the August eleventh twenty twenty election, uh, in-person absentee voting begins on July twenty-eighth. Uh, Peggy or Mike, can you remind me what's, what's on this election? Like, what are we voting for?
I'll, I'll let, I'll let Piggy do that.
Okay.
So this is the partisan primary, so um anything that would be narrowed down for, say, um representatives or um um senators, that sort of thing, we'd be narrowing down for November.
Okay, oh yeah. So I know, so like the, the eightieth district is an example, right? Because there's two running from the same party, okay?
Correct.
All right, so that will be the third election of the year. Oh, goody. Uh, okay, so item R. This is discussion and possible action regarding acquiring a Bobcat for the Public Works Department. We have a recommended motion to, um, to acquire this equipment from Carter and Greenwall in the estimated amount of eight thousand dollars for Public Works Department with funding coming from funded four-one-four capital improvements. So Jeff, have you already bought this? No comment. Would anyone like to make this?
No, we have not, but, but I can give, I'll give a little, let me give a little background.
Okay.
On, on this, or do you, do you want to get, you got the motion? Do you need a second before?
Balog will make the motion, because I want to hear the background.
All right. The motion by Balog and a second by Jacobson. All right, give us the background, Jeff.
All right, so annually, we, we get a really good deal through Bobcat. Every year, uh, for approximately two thousand dollars plus whatever we go over, uh, three hundred hours usage per year. Um, we get the brand-new, a brand-new uh that year's model, um, Bobcat. And that's something they do for municipalities. Um, and we've done that for many, many years. And so, you know, once a year, we do get to swap it out. Um, it greatly reduces the amount of uh repairs that we would have on a piece of equipment. Um, so it's, uh, but we do own the unit, but they allow us to swap it out for a new one for two thousand dollars a year. This year is, uh, they, they've stopped making the unit that we had, and so we have to upgrade to the they, they now put more stuff into it, so um that upgrade is several thousand dollars, as Gary's outlined in this um as well. Um, and then we, we do go over, like this last year, we had more, no removal. Um, we are using it a lot more, so um, we just pay ten dollars per hour for anything over three hundred hours used on it annually. Um, it's a good deal for the village, um, and this money is coming out of, we, we're given twenty thousand dollars a year in our budget to go towards uh tools and equipment, and this is what that comes out of.
All right, questions for Jeff on this one?
Jeff, do you trade the old one in? Did you, I don't know if you mentioned that.
Yes.
I'm sorry if you did.
Okay.
So how old is the old, the, the one you're trading in?
One year.
One year, okay.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
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 Thank you.
Good, it got delivered today. Oh, that's not true, actually.
All right, it's a bad reputation, Jeff. All right.
I'm surprised, no one gave me any grief about the fact that we had to hire, hire people before approval. You know, I was waiting for it. I know Mike was waiting for it.
Well, I think uh COVID nineteen is, we're giving you guys a, a little bit more leeway than usual.
I, I was disappointed, but that's okay.
I know. I know. I could see the, the, I could see the letdown in the eyes.
All right, item S. All right, so um, oh, this is our reminder that village residents interested in serving at any of the following uh committees, commissions, or boards should submit a completed village application to village administrator Michael Grace. Uh, his email and his phone number are on the agenda, and also there's applications on the website. So we, um, we have openings on the Oregon Area Fire EMS District Joint Board, the Park Board, and the Police Commission, and we do have applications uh rolling in. Um, I think my, my plan was, because of everything happening with the pandemic, is to give this um a little bit more time, see what else comes in, and then um make, make appointments as, um, as we need them. So if you have, if you have contacts, folks, that you think would be interested in these um positions, um, tell them to apply. Um, I'm hoping to bring some recommendations to the board, um, maybe like in another month or so, if that sounds okay to everybody. The, uh, and this would just be my pitch to the community. This is a great way to become involved in your community by serving on a on a committee or commission that probably only meets once a month. It's a, it's a good way to see what's happening. Uh, item nine, uh, this is a report of committees. So this is from the July ninth twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. Uh, we had um a town of Oregon extraterritorial jurisdiction CSM review, which was the Dish Property. Um, the Planning Commission uh made a recommendation to approve the CSM, so I would bring that motion to the board and ask the village board to also approve um the, this, the certified survey map for that property.
A second by motion.
Thank you. Second by Horton. Is there any questions on this one?
Yes, uh, Balog would like to know where that property is.
So this is on county, and then just south of Oregon Trail and just north of county A on the west side of the road. South of the middle school.
Okay. And what does this accomplish for the village?
Um, well, it's in the extraterritorial area, so we just, so the planning commission just, it's like a, it's a it's a way for the planning commission to, to
Comment on it.
Yeah, to, and any concerns that we have.
Right.
Okay.
So it's not, it's not in the village.
Yeah, t- typically, we, we make sure that uh we're gonna get right away if we need it in the future, things like that.
I just wanted to put that out there for the public.
Okay. Uh, any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries. Uh, item two, we have um two neighborhood meetings for upcoming projects in Janesville Street. Uh, the first one is the Habitat for Humanity uh proposed project, so there'll be a neighborhood meeting on Monday, July twenty-seventh at six thirty PM. Um, they'll be outside at Waterman Triangle Park right downtown. Their rain date is Tuesday, July twenty-eighth. Um, so if you have interest or concerns about um a conceptual project um that Habitat for Humanity is gonna be doing, might be doing in the village, you should come and hear what they have to say. And then the second one is a, a second conceptual project that may be happening in the village, Lakestone Property um is um considering building um some affordable housing um on a property um towards going towards one thirty-eighth. What direction is that? Someone help me.
East on Janesville Street, right across from the QuikTrip.
Yes, thank you. East on Janesville Street. Um, and so that meeting then is um another neighborhood meeting is Wednesday, July twenty-ninth at six thirty PM, also outside at Waterman Triangle Park. Rain date is Thursday, July thirtieth. So if folks would like to learn more about those, uh, those projects that are in the conceptual phase for the village and give some input very, very early in the process, that's, that's the time to do it. Uh, item ten, we have some minutes that require action, but are in our packet. Uh, so we have some library board meetings from May thirteenth and June tenth twenty twenty. And then we also have minutes from the Oregon Area Fire EMS District, District Commission meeting on June fourth. And then there's more information also that they provided us. We have no unfinished business under new business. Twelve A, we have approval of pending new operator licenses. This has been recommended by the police department. Uh, we have one here. This is for, for Mahan's Liquor, and the person is Andre Voizy. Someone would like to make that motion to approve that operator's license?
I'll make the motion.
All right, so motion by Peterson and second by Jacobson. Any questions on this? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, item B, we have approval of pending renewal operator licenses. These have also been recommended approval by the police department. Uh, for Mahan's Liquor, we have Laura Slazak, and for Mulligan's, we have Brittany Dutz. Would someone like to make this motion, please?
Help me with this motion.
Motion by Jacobson, second by Peterson. Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. We don't have uh any other ones under that item. We have some future agenda items um that we'll be talking about. If nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
The motion, Balog and a second by Peterson. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.